If we can get started now, so that the sooner you speak, the sooner you can go home, that'd be fine. I just know you're not wanting to stay here all night, but thank you very much for coming out of your way this evening to be here. We have money to give out, and this is a great night when you're giving money out. But we just want to hear your presentation. If the clerk could please call the roll.
From the Finance Subcommittee, Chairman Scott.
Here.
Counsel Gitchia.
Here.
Counsel Robinson.
Here.
From the Neighborhood Subcommittee, Counsel, Chairman Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Gitchia.
Here.
Counsel Janess.
Here.
Sixth presenter.
Thank you very much. We're very excited to be listening to all the presentations that each and every one of you will bring up to us. I will just ask that you limit your remarks in your presentation to around five minutes, if you can do that, to give everybody an equal chance, because as many people as are here, there are those many on Zoom, so I just wanted you to know that. We're not here tonight to make a vote. We're here to listen to you, to make a presentation at next Tuesday's City Council meeting, which will be February 16th, so at that time, you can, you won't have to make your presentation, but you're welcome to be here in case any of my colleagues that aren't here this evening have any questions for you. There are two groups that will not be on this presentation, and that's because they have loan auditors, and that is the City of Lowell stained glass windows and the loan auditor for Rowley Farm. That'll be in two weeks, so that's not here this evening. But I want to say for the record that we have Eric Slagel, the Director of Developmental Services, and we have Christine McCall, the Director of Planning and Development, as well as Adam Baiki, the Chairman of Community, of the Community Preservation Committee. So thank you very much for being here. I know we have members in the audience as well that are on the committee themselves, so thank you very much for being here. I will start this. Do you have anything to say?
Rowley's is here for this evening, because the vote isn't happening until two weeks for the bond order.
Right, they're welcome to speak. It's just that we're not going to do anything about that on the council Tuesday until two weeks, so that's fine. Are there any of my colleagues have any, anything to say right now? Any questions? Any, no. So, Mr. Clerk, do we have anybody that, any names that you want to present first?
I think you can open it up to the public counselor, and if there's a list there that I can call up. There are some on Zoom, and there's some on, in the chamber, so any preference to, is there a list that?
Is there anybody that, that is here that said that gonna, that we're going to be on Zoom anyway, so we don't want to call you twice?
I mean, I can, I have a, I have a, I'll just start it. Clemente Park Commission?
Yes, I'm here. All right, so try to share my slideshow here. See if I can share my screen here. Can everyone see my screen? Find it?
Yes, yes.
All right, guys. My name is John Cheam. I'm the Chair of the Clemente Park Committee. I'm just here about, try to do some upgrades of, of the park, you know, the, what's it called, the broken playground equipment, and also do an upgrade on the basketball court since it's being used heavily during the summertime from the youth. All right. So who we are? If you guys know, we're a volunteer group. We're concerned about the community, you know, bringing the community together, doing social events like the Commendary Year that we host every year. We host annual park cleanups. We also attend annual sidewalk meetings with the Lowell Highlands Neighborhood Group and with the Lowell Police. We also receives a lot of feedback of how we should improve the park and things like that. And we had a lot of support from the folks that, the park patrons, like the volleyball players, the youth that uses the basketball court and so forth. And we support a lot of volleyball tournaments within the community. And we also support local artists and art projects within the park. Like we said, we do annual Commendary Year celebrations at the park, but since the pandemic, I think we haven't done it for two years or three years, I believe now, maybe third year this year. But hopefully, we'll get back to normal soon, you know? And like I said, there's some pictures that we do at our park, park cleanups. We also support a boat team during the Lowell Water Festival, as you can see in the slideshow there. And also, we got some survey results that we, from the Community Preservation Act survey results. So basically, 26.2 survey participants live in the Highlands Neighborhood in an open space recreation category, which is 63.5% said it is very important with the park in general and the use of the park. And when we asked about how important are the parks and playground, 55% says very important. And 34.8 of the survey participants that visit the parks more than once a week. So, you know, we have a lot of support from the community in general, as to, we're actually in the process of working with DPD. We got the support from Shannon Cohen from the Superintendent of Parks, and also other key top community groups like CMIA and CALA. And then I just, one of the clips here from letters of support from our community. So this individual said, "It is a place for cultural events, for family to visit, for friends to gather, and for memories to be made. It is time for improvements to be made to the Clemente Park, including repairing the state, state-of-the-art courts and fixing the seedings around the park. And the park deserves as shine as much as the rest of our city. Our community and future generations deserve a Clemente Park as an updated, safe, and inviting space." As you can see, there's are some pictures of the broken playground equipment that we put here, that we also submitted in our CPC application. As you can see, it's not safe. So basically, we try to bring safetiness and to community as, as well as the kids and the youth are using the park, so we don't want nobody to get hurt, and try to bring everybody together if we have our beautiful and safe place for the kids. And also, there's other, some pictures here that are the broken pieces. And basketball benches are broken as we speak, and the cracks within the course that we want to repair or upgrade. And this is an image that we got from DPD about the size of the, the space that we want to upgrade or make improvements on. And also, we're still in the process of speaking with the city vendors to get an estimate quote of how much would everything cost. So basically, our goal is, you know, to upgrade the park, preserving the park history, save a place for community to engage, exercise, socialize, relax, and provide social equity for all regardless of income, supporting a better economic for the City of Lowell, positivity, impacting the community in health and well-being. And so basically, that's, that's all we got, and that's our proposal to the CP, CPC for the, what's it called, the grant that we applied for, for, to kind of get some funding, try to get some improvements and upgrades to the, the park itself.
John, is that the end of your presentation?
Yes.
All right, very good. When you applied for community preservation monies, there's different categories, and this particular improvement to Clemente Park, that's under open space. So I think I'd like to just continue with the open space. Another person and under, another organization under, oh, did you have any questions? Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I do have a few questions. I believe maybe Mr. Slagel could answer or our members of the committee. On this project, there were two grants that were applied for. One was for CDBG funds for the same amount, $500,000. Was that the total budget on the project?
We, the DPD staff submitted a CDBG application for $500,000 for improvements to this park. That did, our application did include some of the line items that they asked for. What was it, but they only applied for CPC funds for $100,000 and some change. So DPD staff is coordinating with the Clemente Park group to then do additional improvements above and beyond, obviously their initial, and then larger improvements with the $500,000 that we'll get in CDBG funds. So the total investment in this park will be $600,000.
Okay, so it's just going to be additional improvements that could be done in the area?
Correct. So we'll be looking at pedestrian pathways because there is a future canal. There's also, you know, I do think some of the proposals by the group is, won't be, be covered by the $100,000. I think once we start getting quotes for, you know, playground equipment and resurfacing a basketball court and benches, you know, that money will go fast.
Be well over it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? No. All right, thank you. Oh, Corey, go ahead.
I know there's been discussions about lighting. Is that included in any of the improvements between the CBDG funds or?
The Community Development Block Grant Funds? No. I mean, we'll look at lighting as part of, so I should, I should scale that back. DPD staff have been looking at this park for quite some time. It is one of our highest utilized parks. And so you saw the, the sketches that you saw from DPD staff that showed phase one scoping. Staff has actually been working on a multi-phase process for the entire park. So what we're talking about with the $100,000 of CPC and then the 500 of CDBG really will cover phase one scoping, which is going to be the basketball court, the playground benches, and then potentially looking at some of the fencing and then the, some of the other courts. I know there's been, you know, discussions about different type, you know, what's out there now, and maybe we'll transfer to, I don't know. I, this is not guaranteed, but like, there's been interest in a pump park, for example, somewhere in the city. I'm not saying that's happening here. But we will also be looking at lighting. And then we are replacing the bocce roof that's separate and aside from both of these accounting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Since we're under the open space, if there's anybody from the Whistler House Museum of Art Park in the courtyard, Sarah, just your name for the record in your organization.
My name is Sarah Bogosian. I'm the President and Executive Director of the Whistler House Museum of Art.
Go ahead, Dylan.
Okay. Thank you so much, everyone, for this opportunity. It's terrific being here. I'd like to thank the CP, the City Council and the CPA Committee and Dylan Ricker for his continued support throughout this process. I must say, he's right on top of all the coordination and has been wonderful. This is a very important project for the Whistler House. I believe that most of you know that this open space expanded park project is part of a bigger Whistler House Museum of Arts and Cultural Center project, which is the construction of a new two-story state-of-the-art building. This edifice will be a very important addition to the City of Lowell's arts and cultural community and to the community overall. It will add a vitality and economic well-being to the residents, businesses, restaurants, and small shops in the entire area. It is important to stress the amount of people that the Whistler House Museum of Art services through this park and the historic Whistler House edifice. It's not only people from low-income and middle-income members of the acre neighborhood. By the way, the North Common Apartments, which is located right behind the Whistler House and Park, is made up of over 2,000 residents. There are over 10,000 affordable housing residents throughout the City of Lowell. We help to service these people. We also serve a very diverse population of Lowell in general, but folks from adjoining towns and communities. Our partnerships with other nonprofits such as Girls, Inc., some of the children that live in the CTI resident next door, and the Hellenic School who use the park on a daily basis, Boys and Girls Club, the Lowell School System, academics, professors, and interns from various universities, from UMass Lowell to Harvard, and the city workers who park in the adjacent parking lot. And these are just a few of the people we service. We also represent and serve the important artist population of this community, destination-location visitors to the National Park and regional, national, and international visitors from all over the world. I am not sure a lot of organizations can say this. Again, we truly bring economic vitality to the community and are changing children's and families' lives and showing them a sense of belonging to a community. These programs are changing their lives, but it's changing the lives of all of us because of the interaction we have with all these people. We are a unique arts organization, not only a historic house museum and birthplace of a famous American artist, James McNeil Whistler, but also the Lowell Art Association, Incorporated, the oldest incorporated arts organization in the country. Maintenance is a big issue in the park. Where we privately own the park, it has become more and more difficult to maintain. My budget for this project was only to bring the park up to speed in general with a new expanded and efficient design. In spite of constant care, we have been losing trees and shrubs because of the elements and disease. This fall alone, I lost two huge trees that rotted from the base because of the rain. Those trees took thousands of dollars to chop up and take away. We also lost shrubs, boxwood bushes, and dwarf evergreens to disease and too much rain. Also, there is a stream that runs under the park, and so that needs to be taken care of in order to prevent more damage to the lighting system that surrounds the Whistler statue. I have already had to replace the lights twice. Since taking over the museum, we also have to pay for the removal of trash, which gets to add up in costs. It is overwhelming at times, to say the least. The budget I presented was the least expensive of the estimates received from three landscape architects companies. The estimates ranged from $700,000 and $500,000 to the $450,000 amount that we settled on. I did not include the need to electrify the park more efficiently and safely, but adding more lighting security and surveillance in order to make safer for more expanded venue activities such as concerts, festivals, adult art classes in the evening. With no lighting at night, we have had the homeless pitching tents in the corner of the park, taking showers from our water sources, charging their phones in the electrical outlets to the right of the historic house, and sadly, drug abuse with needles found all over the property. In addition to my proposed plans, I would like to build a special activity section in the right side corner of the park for children, then an Asian, because James McNeil Whistler was a big proponent of Asian art, an Asian sculpture and meditation garden in the courtyard with yoga classes all open to the public. It is also a learning center for studying plants, flowers, trees, and shrubs in a gardening and landscaping setting. We sponsor a gardening and landscaping program each year now for low-income and middle-income young children taught by professionals in the field. Please remember that we have a 200-year-old house to maintain and repair and restore. I spend monies continually to repair damage done by squirrels and birds and rain to the clapboards and wood frame of the house. It is constant. Even though it's in the heart of the city, one and a half blocks from City Hall, the park is amazingly enough a sanctuary for small animals, birds, and dogs. It is truly a haven for relaxation, wonderful activities, and an oasis for everyone to enjoy. We know that this was the least expensive proposal we received. Please note that in the past, we have come to the city to support our many youth programs, thanks to the CDBG program, and that any funding that you do distribute to our organization will be treated and regarded very highly. With this comes our sincere promise to be good caretakers of both the resources of the Whistler House organization and of your generous contributions. After all, it is our taxpayer monies, mine and those of you who live in Lowell, that we will be using, so we will treat it with the utmost respect and appreciation. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Sarah. I did ask you before the meeting started if you were going to speak, and you said, "No, I really don't have much to say." Well, you did a very good job, I must say.
By the way, may I add that it's been so much fun being here. I've gotten to see a lot of old friends that we haven't seen in ages, and that means a lot, I think, all of us. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions to Sarah? Any questions at all? Yes, Eric?
Thank you for the presentation. My concern always is tree cover. So if, as we take down trees, are we planning on replacing all of them, or are there more trees going up? Or, you know, I think when you look at projects and you see all of the stuff being done around the city, I think that the tree plantings are important. And I'm just wondering if we're planting more trees than we take down, or are we?
We're actually planting more, thanks to Jane Calvin and the Lowell Conservation and Trust. They've had students come and be a part of their training to plant plants that have replaced the ones that had to get chopped down or taken down. So I always, I want to thank them for, for all the support they've given us over the years. Yes.
You can't see the smile under my mask, but I thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
I just have another question.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's, thank you. I can ask Mr. Slagel. I just, my only question was, is there an open, I don't have the document. There's only one copy here. Is there an open space restriction on the property? Is that where?
Yes, so the CPC's votes for all of the open space all included an open space restriction. All of the historic preservation recommendations include a historic preservation restriction and the affordable housing proposals all included a, a time-limited affordable housing restriction.
And the timeline for this project? They're doing construction. Is this after the timeline that is going to happen?
Yes, so that, for the, for the Whistler House project, the, our understanding is that the, and one of the reasons why they got $100,000 in funding now is because that's the timeline for the landscaping in this next fiscal year, would be that, the landscaping to start in 2023. And so that would be their, their phasing for that.
That was the reduced amount was because of the timeline?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We're all set. I'm under open space, so the next presenter is the Rowley Farm. Anybody here to speak? Jane? Yes, come on up, fine.
Thank you all for making the time tonight to hear about all the Community Preservation Act projects. We do greatly appreciate the time that the committee has taken, both your committees and the CPC committee, and, and again, the staff I'd like to recognize as well. Tonight, I'm here with Renata Pomponi from Mass Audubon. Jessica Wilson is online from Mill City Grows, and Ally Jacobs is also here from Mill City Grows. We are the three partners that are working together to create, to protect Rowley's Farm. We've been calling it Lowell's Last Farm. It's really Lowell's Last Family Farm. And this project will contribute to the protection of a farm that has been in, a farm for generations, for over 70 years. And I know that you all know it's the best place to get your Christmas trees, your tomatoes, and your corn. We'd like to be able to protect this 20-acre property. It's been on our radar for, since the, since the 1990s, and planning came in earnest once we understood that Rowley wanted to retire. And over the years, this has been, this protection of this property has actually been voted on by the City Council through several different city documents and planning documents. We started working together as a partnership in 2018 and received a Mass Development Collaborative Workplace Seed Grant that helped us develop a vision document, and that's the map document that I handed out to you. And that notes our vision for a trail network, use of the pond, viewscape, community gardens, cultivated fields, and joint office and program space. The first document I handed out is also a Rowley's 101, which I hope will sort of answer a lot of questions. But first, hear me out with this, and then I can let, then you guys can go over the details on that. on that. As you all know, this is really not just a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, but this is just the, this is the last chance to protect significant acreage in Lowell and to ensure that our grandchildren's grandchildren can experience Lowell's undeveloped landscape. This property's proximity to both the Merrimack River, it's only hundreds of feet away, and there's a direct connection to the Lowell Drake at Tinsborough State Forest, provides a critical corridor for wildlife from coyote and deer, bobcat, we've even seen bear scat there, migratory species, native flora. We will be developing a framework plan, also what you might consider a master plan, which will entail grassland and woodland restoration, all persons trails, accessible trails, programming space and a permanent hub for Mill City Grows operations. Our planning process, while you see a vision document in front of you with a nice map and all, that's really just a first cut. What we'll be doing is a citywide and a neighborhood collective process. We started that on Monday night when we presented to the Pottockville Citizens Council. This property will be open to the public, and we hope that this is a resource that will be protected for the broader community in perpetuity. I just remembered that we had presentation slides. Are they anywhere nearby? There's only a couple of them, but they'd be nice visuals if it's possible to pop them up. We have a photo of Rowley, and Rowley and his siblings have signed option agreements for the purchase within a two- to three-year timeframe. There's a couple of different option agreements that we've negotiated with the parent family. Rowley's parent has asked to have three seasons to harvest his trees and grow his corn and tomatoes. That also helps us with a longer timeline for the fundraising. The timeline is in the document I gave you. I'd be happy to, any of us would be willing to answer any of the questions for you because we understand it is a little bit complicated. There are a couple of different time horizons. If this CPA grant is provided to us, it will require that the city take a conservation restriction on the property. We started talking with the city about that a couple of years ago in anticipation of this. Both Mass Audubon and the Lowell Parks and Conservation Trust are nationally accredited as land trusts, which means we meet the same kind of standards that you think of for a museum or a school. We've both gone through very rigorous processes to be nationally accredited, to be able to monitor conservation restrictions. So whether that's at the Whistler House for their conservation restriction, or for a larger property like Rowley's, we are accredited to be able to monitor those boundaries and any issues that come up with that. The city has been actively involved with helping us sort of scope out this project since its inception. The vision is that the, the plan is that the trust in Mass Audubon will co-hold the two proper, the two parcels. We will co-own them. The city will have the CR, which adds that extra layer of protection to keep it protected in perpetuity. And Mill City Grows will be, have a long-term lease to be able to use the property. They are an equal partner in this project and will have long-term access for their farming operations. CPA funding at this early stage in our fundraising will demonstrate strong local support and commitment, which will enable us to leverage and attract other funders. The document I have given you also outlines, we've already raised over $600,000 in private donations, and Mass Audubon has committed $1.5 million. We imagine that this project will be a 10- to 12-million project, so this $4.3 million budget that you see is really just to get our foot in the door. This is a much larger project. So again, the $1.5 million that the CPA committee recommended, it will be hugely helpful in helping us leverage both state and federal grants and private donations. So we thank you for helping us bring our vision to fruition. Again, this is a protected property that we'll be protecting in perpetuity, and that's forever. We invite you to help us by leaving our, we invite you to leave your mark on the landscape of Lowell by helping us protect this property. On behalf of the partnership, thank you so much, and I'm happy to stick around, any of us is here, to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jane. Any questions? Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Will they have con this summer? That's what I want to know. Will they? Because, I mean, that's really what I care about.
Rowley has said yes. So I just heard that last, on Monday night.
He said yes?
He said yes, so...
Okay, that's all I really want to know. Thank you.
Now, just one quick question, and I've already asked it, and I, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but I just want to put it out in the public. So you have these timelines for Rowley's to, to close the transaction, the sale, and if it doesn't happen, the $1.5 million that was bonded comes back to the city, correct?
I'd be happy to let the city staff answer that.
Yes, the, the $1.5 million is for the purchase of the conservation restriction, so until we get that...
Until you get that, yeah. One way or the other.
That's what we're buying, as the city.
Okay, thank you.
And that happens at the same time as the closing? It all happens together?
Okay, I think there's no further questions, Jane. You presented it so well. I think I only heard this like this is five times now, but that's okay. It's always very interesting. You always add a little bit more. So that concludes the open space, I believe. Now we have community housing, that's the next component here. So we have 555 Merrimack Street, Community Housing Coalition for a Better Acre.
Do you have the presentation?
Yes, go ahead.
You guys have the presentation? All right, great. Thank you for having me, councilors. I'm Claire Ricker. I'm the Real Estate Director for Coalition for a Better Acre, Community Development Corporation in Lowell. This evening, I'm playing the role of Russell Pandras, who's the project manager here for this project. He has been indefatible in terms of his work on this. He is taking a very well-deserved break this evening. So I'm here to, to present his project, our project. Coalition for a Better Acre has been building and operating affordable housing in Lowell since 1982. We have a portfolio of 520 units across 13 properties in Lowell and Haverhill. We have nine units under construction right now in Draket, in the Old Center Street School. This is a project that was featured on This Old House. I don't know if anyone got a chance to catch it, but this was our latest project in Draket. So our next project that we have up for consideration, certainly fully funded and ready to be built this April, is 555 Merrimack Street. We've always worked on addressing difficult issues in our community over the last 40 years, and our project at 555 Merrimack Street is no exception. This is a project that we're looking to develop to passive house standard, which is a designed standard that dramatically minimizes the energy footprint of buildings, prioritizes insulation and a tight seal of the building envelope, installation of highly efficient HVAC systems. This will help CBA bring this building, this project, to net zero in the near future. We also anticipate this project will provide social and community supports within the affordable housing itself. We want to create a better health and housing system for individuals who are suffering from substance use disorders and remission for a year or more. This will represent over $13 million investment in the, in the acre neighborhood. Thought leaders in housing and addiction services have been focused on removing barriers to housing for people in recovery. In 2014, the Substance Use in Housing Leadership Forum was convened in Washington, DC, co-hosted by the Corporation for Supportive Housing, a national thought leader in supportive housing, the National Council for Behavioral Health, uniting voice of America's community mental health and addiction treatment organizations, and funded by the Novell Charitable Trust. The City of Lowell has been working quite hard to address the issues of homelessness, of recovery, of substance use disorder within this community, and the national thought leaders at this conference agree, recovery will never be fully successful without stable, permanent housing. There are barriers to housing for persons with substance use disorder. This national forum identified many of the barriers to housing these folks. These barriers are present in Massachusetts today and have been corroborated by the Lowell House staff when discussing housing needs of clients with substance use disorders. The 555 Merrimack Street project addresses all of these and seeks to create a replicable model that other housing developers and addiction service providers can follow to build partnerships and affordable housing for persons in recovery. We will be partnering with Lowell House to provide a full-time case manager to provide services to tenants as they voluntarily opt in to using these services. It breaks down to about 1,400 hours annually for recovery coach services, which is about an hour meeting each week with each tenant that seeks support, or 700 hours annually of case management services with one hour every other week. We've also programmed approximately $5,000 into a community programming budget that will be used to do programs in a, in the community room that we intend to build, and $3,600 a year in tenant-led programming, which can include meetings or events, or potentially programs that are offered by CBA that will be able to be held in these community rooms. This project is fully permitted and ready to go. The funds that we seek from CPA, the CPA funds are gap funds related to increases in, in materials related to the project. We were funded by the state for this project in 2020. We were using off, you know, the construction cost estimate that was available at the time a year later. The prices are up about 8%. So we were able to get some grant funding from the Federal Home Loan Bank of Boston. We were able to apply for, and we were awarded the 220 potentially in CPA funds, and we are also expected to, we have an expectation the city will also be very generously providing home funds to this project as well. So for the uses of funding, we have about $9 million in direct construction, which includes a 5% contingency. The passive house design results in a small premium on the project, maybe 2% to 3%. The heating and ventilation is more complicated. There's high-efficiency windows and doors looking to be installed, minimum penetrations of the interior and exterior of the building. All right. I'm on slide nine. I'm not sure where you guys are, but I'm on slide nine. So the project team is very experienced in passive house design and construction. Icon and LD Russo have both worked on the most recent lighthouse project in Salem. LD Russo is a certified passive house builder. On slide 10, you can see the timeline for the project. We're looking to close on financing in April, in March to April, with construction beginning in April to May. Roughly 15-month build-out would put us at construction completion in July 2023, lease-up, and then occupancy in November 2023. Any questions?
Any questions for Claire? Any questions? Yes, Wayne?
Thank you. Not so much a question, just a comment that I'm excited by this project, as I know many people in the community are. This is something we sorely need here in Lowell and across the area, so I'm excited to see this moving forward, and thank you for all your hard work on it.
Thank you.
Any questions here? Eric?
If these units sell after they're, they're put together, does that money come back to us?
So this is permanent affordable housing, which will be regulated by a deed restriction and affordable, and affordability restriction. This is, we, CBA has never disposed of property, any of our rental units in a way that they have not remained affordable, and this would be no exception to that.
Perfect, thank you.
Right. Thank you for that. I think you did answer my question. The original amount was 500,000, correct? Was that the original amount, and then it's been reduced to 193?
The original request was about 473, I believe. Yeah, no, 500,000, that's correct, yes.
And it was fully funded, but we're now helping with the contingency? Is that what it is for the... So there was, there was a gap in the construction cost estimate that was related to the cost of supplies and materials. Usually, we plan for about 5%. This was, this was about 8%, given the constraints on the supply chain, et cetera, right now. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? No hearing none, thank you very much. Thanks, Claire. Now, if we could have the next person, CTI, a place to live, community housing, community teamwork.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairs and members of the committee and both committees and the staff of the City of Lowell for your work on this. I'm here with Steve Jankis, developer for Common Ground Development Corporation, a subsidiary of Community Teamwork. I'm Karen Frederick, the CEO, and we are a community action agency, a regional housing agency and a community development corporation. I'm here tonight to talk about our request for $72,800 under the City of Lowell Community Preservation Act to plan, design and conduct pre-development activities for 24 to 30 units of single-person occupancy to provide permanent low-barrier housing for women experiencing homelessness. In 2019, the city led a task force with the Steering Committee of Community Teamwork, the Lowell Plan and the Greater Lowell Community Foundation with the mission of developing and recommending a plan based on evidence-based housing first, which includes engaging community infrastructure to support and sustain a long-term system of permanent supported housing, as well as to, to improve the crisis response system dealing with homeless individuals. And that includes street outreach, emergency shelter and rapid connection to resources to prevent homelessness in the first place. In this report, the need for 200 to 300 units of permanent low-barrier supported housing was identified, and that number has only grown during the pandemic. While there has been progress made in every other area of the report, I'm sad to say there has not been one unit of low-barrier housing developed. Our project is a partnership with Kazandian Enterprises to be located on West Adams Street, and it will assist the city to meet the goals identified in this plan. I'm really happy to inform you that Community Teamwork has also signed us a purchase and sale agreement on another project, which will be the first 20 units toward this effort. It will be low-barrier housing for single individuals. The Kazandian project will add another 24 to 30 units of single-person occupancy housing. The need is urgent, as federal funding has, that has been used to house over 100 single individuals in motels in Chumsford will expire as we approach the summer. This funding will expire, and it will cause a dramatic increase in individuals on the street. We're pleased to be working on this effort with the city to provide housing for those in desperate need. So this funding will provide the pre-development costs, which include legal, civil, I'm trying to think of the plans, Steve. Remind me. The, the environmental, that's what I was trying to think of, the environmental plans. And to do pre-development work, there's a cost. And as you know, those things are typically not funded. We will bring this project forward to the Department of Housing and Community Development for funding for the project. It's a perfect time and opportunity. The state has money for these kinds of projects, so we're hoping that we can get the pre-development done and go to the state with a project ready to go. Community Teamwork has also invested in this project in the time over the past, I think we've been working on this for two years, Steve, to get it to this place. So we're very excited about this into really having a beginning of getting those two to three hundred, or those 300 units that we need now up and running. So we thank you for your time and attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions here? Any questions? No. I think you've explained it beautifully, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. I see things happening because those of you, a lot of you who are here, providing your case, you're, you're pleading your case, but we see what you have done in the past, so it's almost like you're speaking to the choir, because we know the good that you have done. Many of the people that came before us, we've seen many things that they have done, so thank you for coming back again and helping the community. Next is Acre Crossing, Community Housing. Anyone from Acre Crossing? Anyone from Acre Crossing?
Hi, I'm on Zoom. This is Francie Slater. Can anybody hear me?
Sure. You on Zoom? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Let me know if I need to make any changes with my screen or if it's echoing. I'm here tonight representing Acre Crossing, and I'm joined by Will Soucy, who's also on Zoom, and Steve Jankis. And I do have some slides to share, so I will share my screen right now. Hopefully. Okay. So Acre Crossing is a mixed-use development in the heart of the Acre neighborhood. And you may be familiar with the name and with the concept. This project has been presented to the City Council previously, and it is a joint development project between Jeanne d'Arc Credit Union and Soucy Industries. Just a quick overview of the actual project. Here's just a nice rendering of how it will look when completed. It's two buildings that is a mixed use. So one, one building that we're looking at right now is a housing building, and then there's also a commercial building. So the residential component is what we are applying to CPA funding to support. And it's the new construction of 32 affordable condo units targeting first-time home buyers. They're a mix of two- and three-bedroom units with a range of sizes. And they are really focused on supporting families and multi-individual households at those sizes. Here's another nice image of how the development will look again. You see the two buildings there, side by side. The commercial component, just as an overview, is not part of our application, but it will include 30,000 square feet of office space for Jeanne d'Arc Credit Union, as well as a parking structure that will house 160 spaces. There will also be a retail space on street level, about 4,000 square feet. And as I said, none of the CPA funds would go towards the commercial development components. Another nice picture. And this is actually the backside, where you can see the parking. It's actually a two-decks. There'll be an underground level of the parking as well. And the housing building is the one on the far left. This is from Salem Street. So the housing development currently is estimated at $17.7 million for the construction costs. When broken down to a per-square-foot cost, the price ranges for those units, those 32 units, are between $485,000 and $621,000. These prices are well above affordability for buyers in Lowell at the 70%, 80%, and 90% of AMI income levels. So the development team is working to secure funds to make these units affordable for first-time home buyers specifically. And we're looking at a number of programs, including Mass Housing's Commonwealth Builder Program and a number of other down payment assistance programs. You may also remember that Mass Works was just, a Mass Works grant was awarded to this project last year for 1.7 million to fund public infrastructure upgrades, including the sidewalks, lighting, and landscaping that will really enhance the street and the neighborhood. So just a little quick overview of the Commonwealth Builder Program. It's a relatively new program out of Mass Housing. And what it allows us to do is apply for $150,000 per unit of a construction subsidy for affordable homeowner housing for buyers earning between 70% to 120% of area median income. So we will be applying for 4.8 million. That's, that's 150 times 32. The cap that the program will award is 5 million, so we're right up close to that limit. And preference is given to projects that have restricted units for 70% of AMI buyers, as well as mixed-income projects, both of which Acre Crossing is. The Commonwealth Builder Program does have requirements, which include a 15-year affordability restriction. It also requires a local match from the municipality, which the CPA funds would be counted as. And then the home buyers must qualify for some specific eligibility standards. This is just a quick look at another down payment assistance program that Mass Housing offers, which would be available to buyers, all of the buyers at Acre Crossing. So there is a down payment assistance program that offers $15,000, and one that offers $25,000 depending on income. And so this is just to say, we're looking at all different kinds of sources to leverage to really create a housing development that is accessible and that is available to first-time home buyers in Lowell to create their homes right here in the city. What we're asking the CPA funding opportunity, what we're requesting is $763,000 and $200 to create a specific down payment assistance program for Acre Crossing home buyers who are in the 70% to 90% range of area median income. And that would be specifically focused on 23 affordable units. You can see the breakdown. The majority of them would be for 70% of AMI home buyers. The remaining nine units that would not be funded through CPA funds would be affordable for buyers at or below 120% of AMI. The CPA funds would act as a direct subsidy to lower income first-time home buyers in the form of a down payment assistance at the time of purchase. And we would be working with our local partner, Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, to administer this program and oversee all the income eligibility screening process, which is quite complex, but they have great experience in that as they already administer a down payment program, a down payment assistance program in partnership with the City of Lowell. So just to get a sense of the numbers, again, we're asking the CPA for $763,200. Out of the entire development cost, this represents 5% of those development costs. Through a contribution of that amount, the City of Lowell would allow the project to leverage 4.8 million of the Commonwealth Builder subsidy. And that's a 17% match to the Commonwealth Builder funds. So I think it's a pretty good deal for the city to be able to put in 763,000 and get 4.8 million kicked in through the state. And everything that we've done to create a project that really focuses on the greatest need in the city among lower-income home buyers really positions Acre Crossing to be highly competitive within the Commonwealth building pipeline. This is a model that we just wanted to walk you all through. It's a lot of numbers, and you all should have printouts of this in front of you that might be easier to look at yourself. But just wanting to kind of give a sense of how this money would actually create affordability. So a hypothetical family of four that's earning $79,000 in their household annually, that would put them at the 70% of AMI income level. The annual housing allotment is 36% of your income. So that would be about $28,500 per year, and that breaks down to $2,372 per month. If we're looking at a three-bedroom unit, and the total cost of that unit, construction cost is over $600,000, that's definitely out of affordability range for this family. Once we apply the Commonwealth Builder subsidy, that brings the sale and other down payment assistance opportunities, including several that I mentioned, that would bring the reduced sale price down to 400,000, or at least the mortgage would be 400,669. However, that is still out of affordability when you look at a mortgage of that amount plus taxes, insurance, and the housing association fees. The monthly cost would come to over $3,000, which is $675 more each month, which is $8,000 more annually than the family budget can actually afford at 70%. So the CPA-funded down payment assistance of $114,000 for this one unit would reduce the mortgage amount to $286,000. And at that rate, the mortgage plus all the monthly costs would be within their budget. So that's the, that example shows the largest amount of a down payment that the CPA funds would contribute to achieve affordability. There's a whole range, according to our model, the smallest being $2,000. There are some in the $28,000, some in the $55,000. So there is a range depending on the household size and the income that those home buyers are coming to the table with. And here's just a timeline to give you a sense of where the project is in the process. We've got all of the zoning board and planning board approvals are in place. The Mass Works funding was secured. Design plans are well underway, if not totally completed. They're very close. The construction loan process has been begun, and our Commonwealth Builder application is also underway. And we're looking at a construction start date in March of this year, which is very exciting. And just to kind of put this into a bigger picture perspective, I think everybody here is familiar with the housing crisis that Lowell and Massachusetts as a whole is facing. We know that affordable housing is a major issue. We also know that the current housing market has not improved for first-time home buyers. And so the establishment of 32 new homeowner units will really be much anticipated and needed addition to the city. We also know that the location of Acre Crossing is a location that is in need of revitalization. It's a vacant building, an underutilized space. And what we see that Acre Crossing brings to the acre is long-term neighborhood revitalization without gentrification. These are homeowner units so that people have a stake. They're, they own their homes, they're building equity, and they're investing in their community. We're building the futures of 23 families with this CPA contribution. And it would really change the neighborhood. This is, there's a lot of rental units in the acre and a lot of students in the acre with the university right there. And so building a stronger base of residents who have a long-term engagement and commitment to their neighborhood will certainly have a positive impact. And again, for the city's perspective, there will be a great tax revenue increase through the creation of these 32 residential units. And that is the end of the presentation. But if you have any questions, you can direct them towards myself, or Will, or Steve, who are in, Steve's in the room.
Thank you very much, Francie. I just wanted to say that I always have a pet peeve about subcommittees, and the people on the subcommittee get all the information. And my colleagues that are not on the subcommittee, they don't have this information. So if, for some chance, anybody that gave any, you know, outlines of your project or presentations, if you come again Tuesday, could you just bring them in? Some for my colleagues that are not here. You don't have to give us them again. But I always like everybody on the council to have the same thing that we do. I know they're not here today, but this is a wonderful presentation. I think they'd be interested to see it. I know that we'll probably be voting Tuesday on it, but still, they can still get an idea as to what this is all about. So that's just my opinion. You understand that, Francie? Could you present something beautiful? I want everybody to have it.
That info along.
Thank you. Great presentation. Any questions here? Any questions? Okay, go ahead.
Sure. Thank you for the presentation, Francie. I guess my question is that it looks like, and maybe you can help out, the deed restriction is only for 15 years. Is that correct?
That is the restriction that Mass Housing puts on any projects that are funded through the Commonwealth Builder Program. And part of my understanding of that is really to really focus on building wealth, allowing families who are coming in as first-time home buyers to build wealth in the form of home equity. And that a 15-year restriction really, you know, that's a generational period of time. And so that does allow to build generational wealth after 15 years, that they would be able to sell at market rate to really realize the gains of homeownership.
Steve Jankis representing the project as well. And I think in part, the answer to your question goes, I think, to the CP, C Committee has recommended a stage of payback for the CPA funding, if in fact, the unit is sold before the 15-year period. But Francie's point about giving low and moderate-income people an opportunity to build equity in their home, I think, is the goal behind Commonwealth Builder. So the Commonwealth Builder goes to wealth building amongst low and moderate-income folks.
So I understand that. That's their prerogative, that's what they want to do. This portion is more for the down payment assistance, correct?
That's correct.
So as far as the down payment assistance goes, is this like a 0% interest second mortgage that goes on to the property? Is that how it works?
Yeah, the recommendation that the Community Preservation Committee put forward was to structure it essentially as a non-performing loan. So there wouldn't be any interest charge. There also wouldn't be any expectation of payments. And if the purchasers remain in the home for 15 years, it would be forgiven. If they sell the home sooner than that, there would be a ramp down over time, but a portion of that would need to be returned to the program so that it could be reinvested in future similar projects by the, by the City of Lowell's Community Preservation Program.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So this is a 603, it could be hypothetically, a $603,000 property. We could be giving $114,000 to one family, and after 15 years, then the money does not come back to the pool of money for?
Well, the money, the money does come back in the form of tax revenue. So they become homebuy, homeowners and taxpayers within the city. So there is, there is return there. But there wouldn't be the full 115,000 would not come back.
Well, the answer to your question is, you're correct. And but part of the challenge is that we're dealing with people who are at 70% of AMI. So for a family of, let me just get to the right page. For a family of four at 70% of AMI, their income would be limited to $79,050. For a family of three, it's 71,200. For a family of two, it's 63,300. So that kind of income level, without this subsidy, doesn't allow you, it presents an incredible barrier to homeownership and the opportunity to build wealth. And the people that we're talking about are all graduates of Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership's Housing Education Program, many of whom are, represent the minority community who otherwise wouldn't have an opportunity to achieve homeownership. So it is a lot of subsidy, but in part, it's due as well to the costs that are associated with construction. Characteristics that are unique to that site add to the costs. And you heard a presentation earlier from the Coalition about how materials costs have increased dramatically. And there's no end in sight, at least in the immediate future, as to volatility in that marketplace. So this is, this is all about homeownership, the American So this is, this is all about homeownership, the American dream. And it's about giving people the opportunity to build wealth. It's breaking the cycle of poverty, if you will.
So if I'm listening to you correctly, it's a limited time affordable housing for one person to get through. And then the funds, they don't return. And somebody, at the end of the time, the affordable housing piece that is there is no longer affordable housing. They could set it at market rate. And so we lose that affordable housing piece that we invested in for 15 years. It becomes non-affordable housing and gets sold at market rate. And somebody makes a profit that now owned a home.
If you structured this the same way that Mass Housing had structured it, the answer is yes.
Yeah, and that's a problem for me. Thank you.
Any further questions, Wayne?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, theoretical $114,000, that's not pure CPA funds, right? That's some portion of CPA funds combined with that 4.8 million from the Commonwealth Builder Program, correct?
No, so the Commonwealth Builder Program will kick in $115,000 per unit, every single unit. All 32 units will hopefully get that subsidy. And then within CPA, for the 23 units that we're looking for CPA funds to create a down payment assistance program, there's a range of amounts based on our finance model. From $2,000, a very small kick in, and that's a great deal for 15 years of affordability, if you ask me. The highest one is 114, which I gave you the example of. That's the largest unit for a four-person family. That was that sample. And even at that, you know, at 15 years, that's a pretty good deal for affordability. And I think, you know, the important part is really thinking about the long term. You know, what is happening to this neighborhood over 15 years? A lot changes in 15 years. And so when you're turning around 15 years and selling this at market rate, you know, what does that do for the city's tax base at the same time? You know, so I think really playing with that idea, you know, it is a big investment upfront, but it's a long-term investment in not only in a family, in a whole neighborhood, in the community, and in the city.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
And the answer to the previous comment about what happens at the end of the 15-year period, you can place your own restriction on CPA funds. So at the end of the 15 years, for example, just like for the previous 15 years, there's a scale by which people have to pay the money back. You can determine the scale. If you're looking for 100% payback at the end of the 15 years, assuming the market is such that the sales price will allow that money to be reimbursed, you can, you can put that restriction on if you choose.
Anything further, Councilor Gitchia?
I would agree with what you're saying, but I haven't seen the market go bad in 15 years. So at the end, there's a take in this market that's going away from affordable housing with the purposes, and I understand the tax base giving taxes back. But at some point, we're trying, the goal is to create affordable housing for a long period of time, not 15 years. And I think that if the money comes back, we could utilize that money again and reinvest it in more affordable housing.
There's no argument from me. I've seen, I've seen downturns in the marketplace where, you know, 2008 and the late 80s, early 90s, we've had crashes both times. And who knows where the market's going to be once interest rates go up?
I'll take my chances.
Thank you. No further questions from any of my colleagues? Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Steve. So next is another, One Lowell Community Housing. Anybody here representing One Lowell Community Housing? Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership?
Hi.
Hi.
How are you? Good evening, council members, and good evening CPC committee. Shout out to Dylan as well. I appreciate the time to speak in regards to this innovative One Plus Lowell program. My name is Kathy Macardo.
Did we get your name?
Yep, I will. I was just gonna do that.
All right, I'm sorry.
That's okay. My name is Kathy Macardo. I'm the newer Executive Director of the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, which I'm sure you all know, a nonprofit in the city of Lowell that promotes homebuyer education and sustainable homeownership opportunities to our residents. We also administer the down payment assistance programs for the city of Lowell and lead rehab programs as well for over 20 years with much success. We have asked for $500,000 of CPA funds to create a new program that will give our Lowell residents the opportunity to buy a home in their community. This type of program started in the city of Boston. We would be the second city in the Commonwealth to offer this innovative program to our Lowell residents. The city of Boston implemented this program using CPA funds a year ago. It has been very successful, and the city of Boston has allocated millions of dollars to this program because of the need to create opportunities for first time home buyers and first generation home buyers. The market to purchase a home within the last five years has risen over 50%, making homeownership extremely difficult for people to purchase a home. Recently, we have worked with families that have to deplete their savings to purchase a home or had to walk away and lose money because they could not close on the loan. We want to continue to help home buyers. We want to help our beautiful, diverse community achieve their goal of homeownership. We want to start with One Plus Lowell. This program will not only help our families, it will also help to build a stronger community that invests in the city that they care about and they take pride in when they say they bought a home in Lowell. And I have a feeling, and also have a feeling of belonging to our city. That's my speech in regards to the One Plus Lowell program. But I also gave you all a presentation, which I've updated since our last CPC committee in regards to the suggestions that I got from the committee. Basically, this program is to buy down the interest rate in order to give people more buying power. I'm not sure if you look at the market, but the market is just ridiculous right now. And in order for someone with low to moderate income or even up to 100% area medium income in the city, it's, they're unable to purchase in this market. They're always, someone out bids them, especially investors. There's a lot of investors in the city that come in, flip the property, and then sell it for a much higher price. You know, this program is gonna kind of mimic our Home Funds Program. This program is gonna mimic our Home Funds Program, where we will recapture the funds, but we'll put it back into the pool to help more home buyers. So at one time, it will be self-sustainable on its own. I mean, I can go through all the slides, but you all have it. If you'd like me to, I could. But in actuality, I'd rather take questions if you have any, but if that's helpful.
And did you get my point about bringing some more in?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you very much, Rita. I do, Councilor Marcy, sorry. I do have a question about the interest rate buy down. I mentioned to Mr. Slagle. I'm just, you know, the money comes back to the pool from the first time home buyer down payments. And I'm just not sure about subsidizing banks. Like, that's kind of my concern. Like, instead of rather than giving the money directly to the home buyers to use it for additional down payment assistance, I'm not sure where that, how that works.
Okay, so basically, if you have an income of $60,000 and you go to the bank, you might qualify for like about $320,000. But if we are able to buy down their interest rate, that will give them an additional buying power of maybe anywhere ups to $30,000 to $40,000. That's what makes a difference in order to be able to purchase in this market. Because what people's income right now, they're low to moderate income earners, they would not be able to touch this market with their income unless they're able to either buy points. And most people can't afford down payment or enough to even buy down the points to qualify for more of a loan amount.
So I guess I'm missing, wouldn't additional down payment funds do the same thing for cash down upfront?
No, it doesn't really touch it much. It doesn't really bring down your monthly costs. And it doesn't give you more of a higher loan amount. The only thing that, you would have to put at least $50,000 in order to have a higher buying power or more. Interest buy down is the best option in order to have more funding or get a higher loan amount.
Okay.
Adam, can you help me here?
Thank you.
Just kidding.
Any further questions? Councilor Gitchia?
I think Mr. Backy had something he wanted to add. I'm not sure.
Right.
He was looking over, so I wasn't.
Yes.
We just do need to clarify that it was my understanding that what the committee voted to support was actually a down payment assistance model, not an interest rate buy down model. So that's something we'll need, obviously, there'll need to be a little bit of exploration just to confirm that everybody is indeed on the same page. If the will of the council is to support an interest rate buy down program instead, we'll need to review. And it's possible that the CPA committee would need to review that and vote on that as a recommendation back to you before you could support that kind of a program. Because again, what was presented to us was a first time home buyer down payment assistance program. And the vote of the CPA committee was to support that with certain terms and certain conditions.
Okay, it was listed in here under interest rate buy down, so I thought it was part of the funds. So if that's not the case.
I should just, not to disregard what Chairman Backy is saying, because we don't have the existing application in front of us. So we would like to confirm that prior to Tuesday's meeting.
Okay, and I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So can I just go, the interest buy down was part of the summary and was part of the presentation I gave to the CPC committee. I just want to clarify that. It was always the interest. It's One Plus Lowell mimicked exactly the way that they're doing it in Boston using CPA funds. So when we look, when you look at the report, we'll discuss that. But it has been my intention to make sure that this is part of the interest buy down and down payment assistance program as well.
Any further questions from my colleagues? Here are none. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we're in a new category. It's historic preservation. The first is the 1827 bell and wheel repair. Is there anybody here from there? There is not. Okay, I thought where we had gotten some pictures, I thought somebody from there passed it out. So if there's no objection, I'd like to put into the record a little information about this group. I received a call from Sharon Hardy, 99 Church Street, about the First United Baptist Church. She is asking, is saying to me that there was no one available to come up here. Everybody was predestined for other meetings. And so she told me everything over the phone that she had to say. She said that the church had applied for $12,000. And the scope of the work included the replacement of the cracked wooden wheel in the clapper, which allows the church bell to swing and ring. The church was built in 1826. The bell was put there in 1827. So she's very excited about this opportunity to be able to get some funding to preserve this historic structure. So it's broken and should like to have it fixed, and this money would help her out greatly. So I just wanted to put that into the record. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda here is the Lowell Downtown Building Restoration Fund. It's the LDFC. And Allison, is that you?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Allison Lemey. I'm the Executive Director of the Lowell Plan and the Lowell Development and Financial Corporation. Tonight, I'm wearing my LDFC hat. The LDFC is a nonprofit organization committed to enhancing the economic vitality of Lowell. We accomplish this through the creation and management of loan funds that support investment in commercial and residential development throughout the city of Lowell. The LDFC hopes to utilize $500,000 in CPA funds to establish a new loan fund for the specific purpose of supporting the renovation of historic buildings within the Lowell National Historical Park and Preservation District and the Downtown Lowell Historic District. It's our hope that this project helps one of the CPA plan goals to support developers with an affordable means of fully redeveloping properties that are important to Lowell's history. Many buildings in downtown Lowell are not being utilized to their fullest capacity. They've seen limited private investment and extended periods of vacancies. Rehabbing these properties will help preserve the historic assets upon which Lowell was built and reinforce the urban environment of downtown Lowell. Substantial financial challenges stand in the way of restoring these properties. In many cases, developers need to layer multiple complex financing programs to make the projects viable. We're hoping that a pool like the one we're proposing will offer a flexible resource to fill any financial gaps and incentivize property owners to make necessary historic repairs. The LDFC has experienced managing pools of similar type and size. In 1984, the Lowell Historic Preservation Commission was allocated $750,000 in federal funding to be spent on historic preservation projects. They in turn assigned those funds to the LDFC to manage as a loan. For more than 20 years, we administered the fund, which eventually grew to more than $1.5 million in support of the rehab of 23 nationally significant historic properties in the Downtown Historic District. Those $750,000 in federal funds generated more than $122 million in private investment. Unfortunately, the program was dissolved by the federal government in 2018. This time, our goal is to create a $10 million pool, capitalized from LDFC member banks and credit unions. And the LDFC also plans to allocate our own development funds toward the program. We will manage the application process much like our other loan programs. Applicants are referred to us by either local lending institutions or through the city of Lowell. A subcommittee comprised of lenders from the community and city representatives will review applications. And applications would require scope of work and detailed budgets illustrating the sources and uses associated with the project. The CPC has asked that their approval is obtained for any property selected to receive a loan and that a preservation restriction is obtained for properties under this program. We are happy to incorporate both conditions into our process. Loan funds would be dispersed in installments upon approval from the city's Historic Board and/or the National Park Service Architect to ensure that the work complies with historic standards. This is a very similar process to the one that we followed when the LDFC managed the preservation loan fund I mentioned earlier. 100% of our CPC funds would be used for historic preservation projects. The cost to administer the program will be covered by a commitment fee that we were charged to the borrower. CPA funds will be used to attract developers through flexible loan terms, such as buying down the interest rate, deferring interest payments, or filling any gaps in loan to value ratio. We expect that most eligible development projects will require multiple layers of financing, each with their own unique set of parameters to make a project financially feasible. So our aim is to make the terms of our loan as flexible as possible so that developers can select an option that easily builds within their development pro formas. The LDFC Subcommittee would review applications on a case-by-case basis to determine how best to support the project. We also hope that the flexibility of the program serves as an incentive to building owners who have already made substantial renovations to the interior of their buildings but have yet to make exterior improvements. This loan pool could support the exterior work needed to ensure that the historic integrity of the building is maintained. We expect to have the loan pool formally established this spring. And we've been holding regular meetings with our member lenders over the past few months to flesh out the details. A decision by the council will certainly help us in putting those final details together. Depending on the size and scope of the project, we can typically review and close on a loan within 30 to 60 days, depending on the project's other financing sources. Funds would be awarded as a two-year construction loan and recycled back into the pool so they can be lent out for future projects. As the Community Preservation Plan states, Lowell's identity is closely linked to the careful preservation of its many historic assets. And while Lowell has been seeing an uptick in interest from developers in recent years, there remain many significant buildings that have been seeing limited investment and are at risk of are at risk of substantial deterioration. This proposed project will meet one of the goals of the CPA plan by preserving and rehabilitating historic properties in disrepair, allowing developers an affordable means of fully redeveloping properties that are important to Lowell's history. The proposed loan pool also addresses goals outlined in the city's master plan. Many objectives in the plan speak to enhancing and investing in historic resources. Specific action items include ensuring the continued maintenance of private property and public infrastructure throughout the downtown to the standards of the Lowell Historic Board to protect the physical environment. And consistent with other goals of the master plan, the proposed fund will help promote the conversion of vacant upper stories of commercial buildings in the downtown. We believe in turn that these efforts will strengthen the economic viability of our downtown. We greatly appreciate the endorsement of the Lowell National Historical Park, the Lowell Heritage Partnership, and the Lowell Historic Board. And I want to thank the Community Preservation Committee and the City Council for hearing us tonight and listening to our project. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Allison. Could I just ask, would it be possible to get a list of all the properties and owners whose property was serviced through these loan funds?
Through the original one I mentioned earlier?
Well, the one that you just talked about earlier, yeah, that's right. See, it's kind of vague because there's no people yet, there's no properties yet.
Right.
But we'd like to know, I think, who was serviced by this, these loan funds. Would you be willing to supply the council with that information? Let's say in six months, you have three properties that are going to be serviced through these loan funds. Could we have an idea of that? Could we have a memo saying these are the funds that we like a?
Like a report.
Right, yes.
So any developer or building that comes before us as an application will need to go through the CPC for their approval so that we'll be public information that we'd be happy to share that.
Okay, thank you.
Report. I assume that we'll be doing accomplishment type reports for the CPA along the way anyway.
Sure. Just to have accountability here, that's all I want to know. Councilor Scott?
That was my question as well, as far as the accountability. It goes back to the board for approval on each project. Is that the way it's going to work? And then does it come to us afterwards? So we're just kind of giving a pool of money with no fiduciary oversight kind of, that's?
Yeah, the?
And that's allowed under the CPC. I'm just making sure, that's my question.
Yeah, so the city council vote at this time, should you choose to support the recommendation of the CPC allocates money to this program? One of the conditions that the CPC put on this, and it's actually required in order to make sure that we're compliant with the CPA law, is that every individual project that is brought forward has to come back to the CPC for a confirmation that it is indeed eligible for the program. And obviously consistent with the intent of this local program as well. That doesn't require a subsequent appropriation vote to go back to the council. But there certainly could be reporting, probably should be reporting back.
That was going to be my suggestion. Or am I able to add that though, to that type of stipulation that we do have a reporting structure in place to know how it's used?
I mean, I think that we can commit that there will be regular reporting to the council on this. I think that's a reasonable thing on all of these sorts of programs. It's going to be our goal to do a regular CPA report on all of the projects and how their success.
Yeah, oh, I think it's great. It's a way to leverage funds and, you know, I think the program's great, but I just, you know, feel like it's our duty to have that in place, so, thank you.
Any further questions for Allison? No, any over here? No. Thank you very much, Allison. And every city has a resident historian and I overlooked a very, very important gentleman. Steve Stow is here from the historic board. I'm so sorry, I didn't, I didn't. It's hard to see over this screen. Thank you for being here, Steve. Next on our agenda would be the City Hall stained glass restoration. You're not here for that, but I'm sure you know about it. I'm sure you do. Oh, you're here for that, okay.
Segue, Councilor here. Thank you for that introduction and I'm Steve Stow, Historic Board Administrator for the city. Thank you, councilors, for your time this evening to hear this proposal as well as everyone else's here this evening. You don't have to go far for this one. You're sitting in a room that has nine of the 24 stained glass windows that are proposed to be restored under this proposal. 1893, the building is obviously constructed and opened and it's renowned for its decorative stained glass. The original desks and tables that many of you are sitting at tonight date from the building's construction. The ornate staircase in the center of the building. And several years ago, an energy efficiency project dealt with a lot of the windows in the building. What did not happen was the attention to the stained glass because it was not really part of the energy focus at that point in time. But over the years, we've gotten several estimates for the windows and most recently is the amount that the CPC has recommended for approval. So all 24 windows would be restored under the plan. They would actually be removed from the building off site to a stained glass restoration studio. And within this chamber, these nine, there are some good examples of the work. There is a window in the alcove over here to your right where it is, it's deteriorated. It needs to be reconstructed. There's another window in the opposite chamber, which is now known as Room 55, which was the former common council chamber when Lowell had a bicameral form of government in the 1890s when the building opened. It has a window similar to the large radius arched ones you see in here that needs reconstruction. But all of the windows exhibit various forms of deflection, bowing. The most obvious thing to all of us would be the cleaning. I think once the windows are cleaned, then you'll really see the daylight coming through because you have years and decades of carbon and airborne pollutants that have accumulated on the glass. One of the things I believe we have stored in the attic though are actually safety glass protective panels that when the project is done, they'll then have a safety glass put on the exterior of all of the windows to protect them as well. But one of the windows, I mean, if you're here and have the time on some other day, if you can actually access the balcony and the window up in that corner, you can actually get up close and you can see some of the bowing and the deflection. So that's a structural issue. And what would happen is the window would be re-leaded and these vertical metal pieces you see on the windows also give structural support. Those would be replaced as well. So what would come back on all 24 windows would be clean, structurally sound, and restored in place. The 24, the nine here, the ones in the common council or the, I'm sorry, Room 55, as well as the ones on the individual landings in the main stairwell. So, I mean, that is basically the project. I won't say it's a straightforward project, but it's basically bread and butter restoration of stained glass. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to address those.
Yes, Councilor Janess.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, how long would that project take?
Again, right now, like a lot of the industries and the crafts industries, it's been affected by COVID. So if this was three years ago, I could have a much more accurate timeline on that. I mean, that's hope that we would gear up later this year for a year process. But again, I don't think what we would do is take all of the windows out at once. We'd probably start with one area, remove them, come back, put them in place. So that way, we don't have plywood all over the place in the building for an extended period of time.
Makes sense, thank you.
So Steve, are you saying there's only 24 stained glass windows in this whole city hall?
There are 24.
And nine of them are in here?
Mm-hmm.
And some are in the?
Room 55.
Some are in the other side where Susan Lemay is the, no? None are in there?
On this level here. So if you have the council, this was the Board of Alderman Chamber. If you go to the other side of the building, there's a mirror chamber to this that was the common council. And if you're ever down there, you will see similar radius windows to these.
I thought that was the audit, the assessors office.
It's the building department.
She's on the first floor.
It's the inspectors. And then you have the windows that are in the stairways in the transoms on each level.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's very nice.
Yeah, there are only 24 and, but it's still a significant amount of work that needs to be done. Because they've not been addressed since the building was built and opened in 1893 and that's just a matter of, you know. But like any building down here, St. Anne's Church has several stained glass windows that were installed and those have been restored over time in the last decade or two as well.
Thank you so much. That's interesting. Councilor Scott?
Thank you. I can't imagine what they're going to look like when they're actually cleaned after so much time. Just doing that alone would be?
Just think about this as a deferred maintenance issue.
Yeah, absolutely, I guess so. The longest deferred maintenance issue probably, one of them. I just have one question. As far as the bonding goes, with the decision to bond this particular project versus, was it just a stretch funding?
Well, I think it was a combination of the stretch funding and also this is a city asset, whereas the other projects were not city assets. So the city will hold this project. This, the city will own this building guaranteed forever. So bonding it is not an issue about change in ownership or divesting.
So it just made sense, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And on my end, what's nice about that is that, you know, it allows the entire project to be done at once rather than phases and also allows more funds to go to other projects within the CPA process.
Beautiful, that's fine. Any further questions? No. Thanks, Steve. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Now, I bet you're next. Are you next? No, no? Next on this agenda is 80 Gorham Street, the structural facade restoration historic preservat, yes. Oh, on Zoom, okay. Sorry about that, I didn't know there was another. All right. Michael? Okay.
Leo, Leo Montero?
Yes, this is me. Good evening, members of the council, members of the community. My name's Leo Montero. I am the manager of New Gorham LLC, the developer for 80 Gorham Street project. I am also a general contractor. I run my own projects and I've been working in Lowell, renovating properties, investing in the city for the past three years. I have a couple of notes from Steve Stow from the Historic Department of the City that I'd like to share with the committee. Historically known as the Lowell Hotel, 80 Gorham Street was built around 1829 in the late federal early Greek revival style and is listed on the National and State Register of Historic Places through its inclusion in the Lowell National Historic Park and Preservation District. It is also listed on the State Register through inclusions in the Downtown Lowell Historic District. It cannot be stated strongly enough how significant this structure is, dating from Lowell's earliest period of development, when the community was still a town. This property along with the adjacent two at 62 and 70 Gorham Street form the most intact cluster of separate pre-civil war privately constructed dwelling houses in Lowell. They provide the best example of the appearance of Lowell during its earliest stage of development. I've applied for the CPA funding due to the size of the task that I have in front of me to restore the front facade. I will share some documents so I can talk about a little bit more the details of the project. This is, I'll start with the future, how we're proposing the building to look like. We will be renovating the entire structure inside and out. I will start talking about the front facade at this point. So where we're currently, the front facade. Great. The front facade presents a bulge, a deflection of about eight inches. I'm not sure if the pictures do justice, but we can see right about here where that bulging is. And it's visible if you're on the street, it feels like the building is falling forward. I have this, this plan that will illustrate the eight inch deflection on the building. As we can see, the building is not straight, it is bulging forward. And what we will be required to do is to rebuild, take it down and rebuild the front facade per historic standards. I have been working closely with Steve Stow and Dave Fuller, the building commissioner, since we acquired the building back in July of last year. We have done the initial stabilization, we've done the cleanup, we've done all the plans. We are finished finalizing our permitting process. I have been working with an engineering firm that has extensive experience in this type of project, not only locally, but also nationally. The firm structures north out of Salem, Massachusetts. Ed Mull is our structure engineer who has been closing, who has been working closely with us and our masonry subcontractor. So we will be taking down, after shoring the building, we will be taking down a good portion of the facade, which is, as you can see here, it's marked with this X in the middle. Actually, after holding site meetings, there will be, towards the windows on the left, we'll be taking down a little bit more of what's shown here. We've been having site meetings to determine the safest, most practical way to accomplish this. And we've determined that the best way is going to be to take down a little bit more than what's shown here. We will then have to reset the existing lintels and granite piers that are currently there where the deflection is happening. Once those are back into place, we will be tying them with the existing tie rod system. Only then, we will be building up the new front facade. All the existing brick will be reused, will be salvaged. And obviously, new windows, high efficient windows will be installed per the historic There's also some other structural issues on the building that will be taken care of. Some of that work has been started to take place under the, on an immediate emergency basis. We have been touching the building here and there. We are in the process of installing the shoring towers to support the roof. And these arrows here on the plans do show where the shoring towers will be going. We will be, then, once we stabilize this building, we'll be building this addition in the back. There's currently an addition in the back that has been condemned. Pretty much the building is condemned at this point. But we will be taking down that addition, increasing the building and providing market rent, rental units for this location. We will be, there will be two storefronts in the building as well. Hopefully, some community, local, small businesses will take advantage of it. We're working with the engineering department as well, will be investing money on the infrastructure, you know, providing new sidewalks, running all new mechanicals towards the building. And I've been closely working with National Grid, possibly have this building be carbon free, you know, no fossil fuels, 100% electric through the use of, you know, high efficiency heat pumps and electrical equipments. My last project in the city, I was able to accomplish that, even though it was a smaller project. But I am hoping to also accomplish this on these properties as well. I am also the developer and owner for 62 Gorham Street, which is not part of this application, but I think it's worth to mention. I have been, to date, I have been working with Enterprise Bank and they kind of came through big time for us in the city by fully approving our construction and permanent loan for that building. That building has a structural permit in place. I can say that at this point, we have saved the structure that, you know, was partially collapsed and we are moving forward on this building next. We're breathing in new life to this corner of the city. It was a corner of the city that has been neglected for many, many years, costing the city money with daily cleanup, daily cleanup of needles and, you know, trash left by the homeless and, or the displaced, I should say. And we have been there since late summer of last year. The project is happening as we speak. We, you know, I have secured some sort of finance, some private financing just to keep on going with this needed shoring needed in order for us to start taking the facade down and the red- down and the rebuild of the facade. I'm also working with Mass Development. It was referred through, was referred to Mass Development from Maria Dixon from Planning and Development. She put me in contact with them, and they have been in advanced conversations with us in order to provide the construction financing needed and also the permanent financing for the project, as, you know, this building does, fits their vision for the Commonwealth as well. Here's some addition, some more additional pictures of what we're proposing. This project has been approved by the zoning board, by the planning board as well. Structural permits, the permits are pretty much in place for all of them. We are keeping a lot of the existing trees, planting some more, even though it's a downtown location. Our neighbors are excited about that as well. And I guess I'll open up for questions if there are any.
May I just say my thoughts? When I come from work every day and I'm going home, I go down Appleton Street, and I always look to the right, and I see where Dana's Market used to be all along there, and I say to myself, those are the most beautiful-est buildings, if only we could do something with them. And you just made my day because that is tremendous. I don't know what it is, they look so quaint. They're different, and they're so pretty that they could be. I said, it's a shame they're falling into disrepair, so I am so glad you are rejuvenating and revitalizing and making that area beautiful again. That was, those places have a lot of memory. I know Helen Donegan had a place there, there was a tape place, so many things. I go back there a long way, so thank you very much for preserving that historic site right there. Thank you, Mr. Councilor Yegia.
This is the type of project I envisioned that the CPA funds would be used for. When you look at the revitalization of just this little piece, I think this jumpstarts an area that has been neglected for a long period of time, and I think it, when you see areas like that, it cultivates a certain look for people and a certain demand. You come right off the connector and, you know, you do that loop, and it's right there. I just, what's the estimated overall budget for the project?
2.4 million.
Yeah. Again, I can't thank you enough for even investing in the area, and I think you're going to jumpstart a revitalization down there that is desperately needed since, you know, we got that courthouse area that was down there. And when you look at that corridor, it always was a beautiful area when I was a kid, and I can't thank you enough for this. And this is the type of projects that I thought the CPA monies would really generate some growth to the city, and I thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scott.
Yeah, I would just echo the sentiments and just say thank you for investing in Lowell.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Montero, I just wanted to echo my thanks as well. Like Counselor Mercer, I drive by this spot quite frequently, and I looked at these buildings, and they're just such different buildings, and they're so intriguing to look at. And, you know, in my mind, I thought about what they'd look like fixed up, and just the excitement to know that we could possibly get to see that is great, and I'm really looking forward to this. So thank you very much for your willingness to invest in our city and to preserve our historic buildings. Thank you.
Yes, well said, thank you. Counselor Robinson?
Again, I echo my colleague's sentiment. Then, a couple buildings down, we have the Keep, I believe it's called, and they appear to be pretty good neighbors. Everything's well-maintained down there, and I'm sure this is a greatly welcomed addition to the neighborhood, so thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from my colleagues, or comments? Counselor Janess?
Thank you. Just briefly, I would like to just thank everyone who presented tonight, and thank the CPC for all their hard work bringing these projects forward. There's a lot of exciting projects, and I think we're entering a new time in Lowell with having the ability to access all these CPA funds that we didn't have before. And so it's very exciting to see what we're going to do with them, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also, I remind you that this is going to be coming up for a vote on the City Council meeting Tuesday, February 16th. You're all welcome to be there, and I promise you don't have to do another report because our presentation, I think we've heard it all, and we're very, very impressed by everything that we hear. So thank you very much. Thank you to the Historic Board, the CPC Board, there's a member here, I don't know your name, but Brad. Brad, thank you so much for being here. So thank you, and if there's no further comments or questions or requests, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thanks so much.